I appreciate everybody. I know this is a big book to even try to figure out everything we gotta do. Sandy had given us in our packet. Casey had shared. And from the US Department of Homeland Security.
From the back page is.
Okay. Okay, what we had done last Monday in the meeting, we had decided to table these two topics. And it was pertaining to the mask, whether we it says wearing them, but whether or not we mandate them, or whether we strongly encourage what we do, as well as then the other topic was considering staff as critical infrastructure workers. Guys, I don't, I don't even know where to begin in regards to unless, the only thing I'd have to do is we're on the table, tell everybody they've got their two or three minutes and, and let's just politely agree to, well, this is a workshop, this is not the meeting getting. So go around the table and let everybody give their three minutes of what their heart of hearts is feeling. As I mean, I can tell you, if you've been like me, I'm not sleeping much in the last three or four days. I wake up about regular in, almost 2:40, 3:40, 4:40, just trying to figure out, there's no writing or there's no. So Linda, I would, let's go this way, guys, if that's all right with you all, go.
Okay, with the masks. I think, and I hate to use the word require, but I think it'll take a while to get everybody used to it, but I think we should mandate masks. You know, it'll take, it'll be a learning curve for the little ones, but like most of the teachers have said, they teach them how to use a pencil, they teach them how to turn a page. They can teach them, may take a while, but they can teach them. But with the masks, I'm for it.
Mandate or required?
Let's go with required. Because mandates will.
Okay, I'm just getting it so that when we get to the time comes, we're gonna know what kind of verbiage we're gonna use, okay? I'm just trying to take some, I'm trying to just take some quick notes.
The infrastructure, I, I'm still on the pencil line. Me, it sounds like what she was saying, was saying about the, you know, giving the teachers an option to me. I thought you could have an option of coming to work if you wanted to or not, but Dustin had said no, that you couldn't have the option of coming to work if you were exposed. If we don't do the infrastructure, because like that's some of the businesses, if you, they send, help me on that place to, and they close them if they, you know, if they don't follow the direction. So that I'm still, because I don't think, I don't think a teacher needs to come to school if they've been exposed. So that's where I am on that. I'm still wishy-washy on that, but I'm leaning more towards not accepting the infrastructure. Right now, I'm still on the, on the line.
I mean, I want you to, I want you to speak what you gotta speak. I mean, that's all for having a workshop. I want you to know, I mean, this is, this is difficult and this is probably, and I can tell you, this is the most difficult thing I've done in my 17, 18 years. How about you, your claim? And I guess we've been in here the longest and the thing about it is, is we're, we're all parents, we're all grandparents, close to it. Let them like our grandparents, even if we don't have them.
Mother of a teacher.
Mother. I'll say it when it's my turn, go Mike.
I need 30 seconds.
Okay.
I don't think we should require the mask, and I think we should adopt the infrastructure as per the law.
So it should be your choice?
Yeah, freedom. I could rant for an hour on why I'm looking free, but the business aim, that's my, that's how I'm going.
Well, I mean, that, we're just trying to, yeah, okay. David?
Okay, I'll start with the infrastructure first. I'm not sure that, you know, we wanna give our teachers a chance to be able to work this year, considering all that we're doing with the mask issue. If we're not gonna mandate masks or require masks in school, we know there will be transmission. No question, that's, that's not an option. So our teachers are gonna be exposed. I would hope that we do what's best for everybody in this situation and give teachers a chance not to, because we're gonna be one of the most hazardous places for the transmission of the disease. How do we come down on this issue? I feel like in some ways, teachers feel like they're being sacrificed in this setting because we're calling crucial workers, and they are essential workers in every sense of the word because teachers are that in our society. Defending them at all costs, to me, is very important, so I would probably vote no against the calling them essential workers because I think why would we put another problem in the system here? We bring that sick teacher, exposed teacher back to the school, that's one more chance for the fire to start. And once it starts, it's where it ends, who knows? It could end with any one of us being exposed because we're in the school where this, this teacher was at yesterday. And you know, I just don't think it's the right thing to do. If the CDC thinks it's a good idea for people to go home after they've been exposed to slow this thing down for everybody's benefit, that's what we should do. It's gonna be tough on teachers because we're in a situation where there's not gonna be, there's not gonna be a chance, there will be infection in our school this year. We will have students with coronavirus walking the halls. And a good chance, most of them won't be practicing social distancing and they won't be following the, the rules about keeping their hands off everything. They're children. And as an adult, I think the right thing to do is to tell those children to wear masks at all times, including staff, and it's the right thing to do to not sacrifice our teachers. Because this rule may start out, once we classify them as essential workers, we can change the rules and say, you gotta be at school, we're firing you. And there will be some teachers that have to make that tough call. Virtual learning, you know my opinion on that, I think it's not ideal. It's not the best thing for our students, it's not. But there are a lot of other benefits in being able to pick up on virtual learning. I may be going a long winded here, I'm sorry, but virtual learning is the future of vegetation. There's no stopping that. And the sooner we do that, the sooner our children have a better chance to compete globally, not just nationally. We need students that can pick up a computer and do anything and everything they need to do with. Why don't we take that nine months to do, six, nine weeks to do that? Well, that's water under the bridge, we've already made that decision. So my decision today would be to vote against the essential worker part because I don't think it's the right thing for teachers. They should have the option to stay home and use the CDC guidelines, that's what they're there for. If they're good for everybody else, they're good for teachers. And the mask, it's inconvenient, my glasses are fogged up right now. I don't like breathing into this mask no more than any of you all do, but I know it may help not give you, you, you or you what I have, so I'm gonna wear a mask. Sorry, I took more of my three minutes there.
No, I mean, you're fine.
But I appreciate everybody's opinion here, I think it's the right thing for us to do to sit here and talk about it and not get personal. I don't take anybody else's opinion with any less of disrespect than I hope you take mine, because I respect all of you.
Well, I mean, I agree, I mean, that's why I think we're here, we're all. I mean, the ultimate goal is, I'm raising more kids, and educating kids.
Well, I'll say, I will say yes to wearing a mask, and I will pray for kindergarten teachers to try to get their kids to wear masks because it's gonna be very difficult. But I think it's the way to go, I think that, you know, like I said, I hate them as much as anybody, but you know, it'll help, anything, you know, to help slow this down, I'm for it, so yes, I'm the mask. And before I get into this next issue, I'm gonna go back to virtual learning, David was talking about virtual learning, it's a, it's a good thing. But you gotta think about virtual learning, someone in, in our situation, not like high school, but in our situation with kids, young kids, someone has to stay home and watch these children. They can't be left alone. And unlike last spring, when they got a packet or two to do, we're looking at six hours a day at school. And you know, some of these parents, they both have to work to survive. So you know, if we make virtual school, you know, of course, we give them a choice, which is, you know, people may have choices strictly up to them. But if we went virtual, you know, you're going against what we ask them to do, make a choice, so I don't think that people are gonna be put in a situation where it takes two people to survive, to put them in a situation where they lose their house, lose their car, and not be able to feed the family. Now, back to the critical infrastructure deal. I've talked about this a long time, and like you, Rex, you talked about, I lost sleep over this too. We're not just talking about adults here, we're talking about children. And if I sat here and voted for that, and one person, one child got sick and died, I'd never forgive myself because that was my responsibility, that's what I was elected for. So I'm not for the critical infrastructure, and that's all I'm glad to say.
All right, I understand that, I think, and, and I've heard different ways of the way you put it, and we're gonna have to come to it as an inclusion towards the end. I have to wear a mask at work, I understand that.
And you're still working on that?
I work in healthcare, I don't have a choice but to work. When it comes to the mask, I think we can strongly encourage. I think we can lead by example. But I do not think we can use the word mandate because, and my, and this is my heart of hearts, this is, you know, everybody's at their say, this is my say. I don't think we can mandate it because I've had people say, well, you mandate that people fix smoking buildings, you mandate that people wear seatbelts, you mandate this, you mandate that. One, the government has not mandated and made it a law. And in the event of that, to piggyback on that, laws are broken every day. People wear their seat, people do not wear their seatbelts when they drive, they text and they drive. Can we lead by example? Yes. Can we show the children? Yes, because like you said, we teach them how to hold a pencil, we teach them how to start writing in person. We teach them to walk in the halls in a straight line, but that is a learned skill. We will have to teach them that masks are gonna become part of what we may have to do from now on. But that has to be a learned skill, not mandated, not just. Because in a classroom, how can the teacher teach when they are constantly policing wearing the mask, leave the mask alone, keep the mask on? Will it be a learned? Yes. But can we mandate it? No, because it's not been mandated for their parents, and these children are loaned to us. I had to teach my child how to act. I had, my child, God help her, acts like she was taught. The best thing that I can pray for is that I taught her well, how to be a good citizen and to give back to her society. We need to realize, we are not, we are here to care these children, but we are not the ultimate guidance for these children. We can try our best to mold them and to teach them to do, but it, it starts at home, just like manners starts at home. Just like learning starts at home, just like language starts at home. If all they hear is guessing and ranting and raving, that's how they come to school, they have to learn, we can't say those words from where it's good. So my gut is, we can, the verbiage I would want to say is we can strongly encourage the wearing of masks, especially fourth grade up. I had a, I had one of the individuals here at the school say that out of the K through three, 21 people wanted to message each other, and they all got back with me, about 21 people. Five said they wanted a mandated, the other 16 said, how are we gonna teach phonics if they can't see our faces? How are they gonna learn? Some of them have hearing deficits, and how do they do that? We can teach with a shield that we are willingly forgiving and, but they did not wanna mandate. And that's our levels, I mean, that's our levels, when you think of the bulk of that, that's 21 out of the K through three, that's our little people teachers. Five wanted to be mandated. And so I think we would strongly encourage the mask, but I don't think we can actually use the word mandate, that's, that's my gut, that's the way it works, and you know, that's a scary place to be. Infrastructure? I think that we're all over the board with the infrastructure. My thing of the infrastructure is, we're saying unless you've tested positive, you need to be at work. If you're showing signs, if you're sick, it's just like a strep throat. We want you to stay home until you know you don't have symptoms aside of strep throat or flu or or the coronavirus, until you're tested and, and get that back. I'm not thinking that we're saying, you know, we, it is a choice, they would not, if they thought they had been, if, here's my feelings of how we would say it. If you have been exposed and you are symptomatic, no, we don't want you in a classroom with children. That would be maybe when we would put you in a, in a ring, in a designated observation room, possibly, and say, you're gonna teach your kids, you know, virtually, do we know where you're doing? But I mean, if you're sick, you're not here at school anyway. If you've got a cactus or you're, you know, you're symptomatic, you don't come to school anyway, you get a, you get a sub, and that's gonna be hard to do this year anyway. But if you're symptomatic, you would not be at school. There would be protocols for the teachers, I mean, I, I think they've set a, you all, I mean, minus Michael, y'all have done a wonderful job with our plan, and everybody is gonna be tested. Or strained, not tested, excuse me, everybody wears the verbiage, everybody's gonna be strained. So we're gonna know that, and, and we plainly say, if you get feeling bad during the day, we're gonna check you again, we've got a nurse on site. And you know, if you felt that you'd been exposed, but you didn't, you know, and again, we say our teachers to wear masks if they think they've been exposed, we're gonna, we're not gonna require, we're gonna encourage our teachers. If they can't be socially distanced with that child, then they need that mask on. If they're gonna be socially distanced and teaching 10 or 15 feet away from the child, and they put on a mask and, and speak back, you know, clearly with that child, with those children, I think that's, that's acceptable. So, I mean, I think we're all over the board with the critical infrastructure to say, yes, they're critical, because we, we're in the business of educating children. And to educate children, we have to have the teachers here that have that distinct set of skills to teach those children. And we do not have that all the way out across, if we say our children are at home, a lot of them are being raised by grandchildren, or grandparents and things, and they're not. We, we're in the business of educating children, and they have the distinct set of skills, they can't go to the unemployment office and say, I need 15 workers because I have 15 open spots. Sandy cannot hire 15 general labor workers to teach our children. We have to have designated classes, trained professionals. Not everybody can do that.
Has there been some consideration for the mask being required? Let's take out mandated, that seems to be a catch and fall for the verbiage. For instance, now, a mask is required to enter Walmart, a mask is required to enter Bootsie.
They're saying it's strongly encouraged, but they're not.
Their sign says required.
But they're not, they are not battling people that go in and refuse it. They said they wouldn't battle them.
Here's one of my concerns for that, is if we don't require it, we're leaving the door open for the ones that say, you didn't mandate, you didn't require, so I don't have to worry. Daddy says I don't need a mask, because that's what daddy thinks. So if we don't put the rule in there to make a line in the sand, there won't be a line, and everybody's gonna be running around going, daddy, daddy said you didn't mandate it, or it's not required. I realize a lot of students won't do it anyway. From a practical standpoint, we'd be lucky if you get half of them.
So what are we gonna do if they don't?
We're gonna require them, we're gonna ask them to put it back on again, but if we don't put a rule down, if we don't say, if we strongly suggest, you just suggested it. Teachers and.
You didn't tell me to do it.
You didn't tell me to do it, you suggested I might do it. And I realize it's gonna be really hard on the younger ones, so maybe we do leave some room in there to say, hey, you know, second grade down, we're gonna give them some time to adjust to this new rule, because we realize it's gonna be a big deal for them to walk in. They're gonna feel out of place anyway when their sister comes to school and has to wear a mask if we do this. And she's wearing a mask every day, but there are others, you know, younger sisters in the first grade's not having to wear one. They live in the same house. Either one of them gets it, the whole house gets it. That's what we're dealing with, we're dealing with a disease here, that if anybody gets it in their house, it's just like boom, it's spread. And the asymptomatic cases, 40% is the estimated number. So 40% of these Corona cases are gonna be walking around this school without a mask on. That are asymptomatic with no symptoms. And those that don't have a mask on will be the ones that become the victims. And even going with the mask, it's not, it's not foolproof, we know that, it's just a layer that we can stick up to stop a disease from spreading that we don't have an antidote for, we don't have a vaccine, and we don't even know where it's going. We don't know, that's what scares me. So if I could just say it in a way that, if you don't wanna say mandated, we require you to wear a mask in our building because it's, it's the safest thing to do for our school. It's gonna be inconvenient, and a lot of people aren't gonna follow the rules. I can't fix that part. But I can make a rule that says, wear a mask in my building, it's the best thing to do for everybody. Not sacrifice just a little bit, the benefit's off. But if you wanna change it to a setting where, I realize, you're not gonna get a kindergarten student to wear a mask all day. You're not gonna get Lita to wear this mask all day, I'm gonna be trying to find a corner somewhere where I can jerk it off, just like I'd like to do right now. But if we don't draw the line, and we don't put down the rules, there won't be any enforcement at all. And we're not gonna be able to enforce this thing anyway, other than keep saying it over and over and over, the same way that we do all day long. It's all day long, telling the same thing over and over. But if I don't state it as a law, if we just recommended or suggested that we wear seatbelts, how many people would learn? Oh, man. Put that $50 fine on there, if everybody or brother's jerking one off. I'm not saying we need to go after this with an addictive hand or a forceful hand, and feel like we're trying to take somebody's freedom. We're just trying to get everybody to do the best thing we can in the situation we're in. Because we're all in it together, teaching everyone else. We've all got a connection to the school, Mike has a daughter in school. We're all, we're in here today in a school building, so it will affect us, what goes on in this building, and it will affect our community. Probably the biggest influence on this disease will be the opening up of these schools. Do we do the right thing? And do we get every precaution we can take? Because it's too late, once the wagon leaves the barn. Once we pile these kids in here, and half of them's got masks on, and half of them don't, and this thing fires up, we'll just be picking up the pieces. Sorry, I didn't mean to take your time, I'm just trying to come up with a way to.
No, I mean, guys, this is where we gotta be, I mean, we gotta speak our heart, we gotta figure it out. And I guess I'm sitting here gonna say play devil's advocate because it's something we gotta talk about. You said, you gotta, and I'm trying to think back how he said it, but you said, we gotta, we gotta do it, we gotta put it in place. But in regards to, we make that rule, how do we police it, because you said we wouldn't be able to police it? We make that rule, we're giving them no choice but to police it, then what do we do? And I'm just saying, I, I'm throwing that out there. Do we, how do we police the kids that say, you said daddy said I didn't have to? Try, are we gonna say then daddy can get them and take them home?
We do what's best for the school, if they're not willing to follow the rules. If they don't follow the rules on dress code, we send them home.
We call them, we call parents and say, bring them some clothes.
Get them some clothes up there.
We do that, and I understand that, David, but I'm just saying, we're sitting here saying that we're gonna mandate it, we're giving those people no choice but to spend 90% of the time, with 10% of the kids, to mandate something.
Which might save one person's life.
Oh, I understand that, I'm not saying, I mean, I've got my mask on, I've got my mask on, I, I wear my mask with my mother. You know, I would not, I would never forgive myself if I gave my mother.
You're in tough business, you're in the.
I'm in the tough business, I'm exposed every single day. I'm scraping the laundry, I scrape out on the front porch, I'm coming to my house. Me and Sydney go, me and Sydney strip every day. We have a shower curtain that we have hung on our screen porch, and it's no joke, we've got a shower curtain because when she comes in from the hospital, she strips her clothes out on the porch, and her shoes and everything, she's out there, but she goes to her next shift.
Compare that to having to wear a mask.
Compare that, I mean, and I will say the same thing, if you saw what my kid had to wear, if you would say, just put the frickin' mask on, people, just put the mask on. I mean, she wears an N95 goggles, a shield, face the nose, and and, and it's mandated to them because that's their choice of profession. Our teacher's choice of profession is to teach children, not dictate and mandate to them about constantly reminding them, do this, do this, do this, do this, do this. And again, I use that 90-10 rule, 90% of your time educators is spent on 10% of kids. Will they learn to wear it? Sure, they will, they'll learn, it's a learned behavior, they learn to walk in the halls in a straight line. They learn not to scream and holler, to be quiet in halls. They learn how to sit and eat the cafeteria, when some of them at home have been able to eat in front of the TV, on a TV tray, or eat running around, they have that. That's where I think we need to, you know, that we can strongly encourage Casey to be part of the dojo of behavior.
Can that be part of the dojo of behavior? Sorry.
I think could that be part of the dojo of behavior, you know, because you had those parties, don't you, for those that behave well?
I mean, and, and that's part of learning curve. I agree. Part of the learning curve.
I don't have any parties issue though.
It really is true. No, there won't be parties issue.
We probably, if we went with that mandatory, we probably would have to come up with a policy, with a staff. They did not wear theirs. What would be their punishment, uh, policy for the kids, you know, like for rules for the kids, rules for the kids, a proper, what this one would be administered to the parents and children. I'm just saying. We, we have to have the board debate on this type of.
You know, there would have to be a policy. We say we're gonna mandate masks and we're gonna have to come up with a policy that says, you know, your first warning is a verbal warning, then it's a written warning, then it is, then inspiring for a teacher. I mean, we'd have to come up with some kind of hierarchy. We'd have to do the same for students. So if, if we're gonna mandate it, we have to come up with a policy that says what we're gonna do.
And we'll enforce whatever you all.
I mean, they don't have a choice but to enforce what we've got. I mean, that, that's our job. If we say it, then they have to enforce it. And again, that's the ninety-ten rule.
You gotta think about the kids that are gonna get a doctor's note or what the doctor's note can look like. How are we gonna address that issue? And what are we gonna call acceptable?
And we do have teachers that they're gonna get a doctor's note.
Well, I agree. I mean, you're gonna have teachers that say, and, and this is what people may think. You have teachers that'll say, or adults, I won't say teachers, let me just take that word back out of the way. You're gonna have adults in every profession that says, I have a medical condition that makes me medically fragile. I have asthma and the CDC requires that you do not wear the mask. You're gonna have five more of those same adults that say, I have asthma and I won't work if you don't mandate masks. Because the CDC says you should mandate masks. Well, the CDC says if you have asthma, if you are under the age of two or if you have, if you are not mentally capable of removing it yourself, that you should not wear a mask. So you've got same medical condition. What do you wanna call it? Fragile medical condition, whatever you wanna be. They will say, one, one, one group's saying, I won't work if I don't, if you don't mandate it. One group's saying, I don't have to wear it because the CDC or my doctor says with asthma I shouldn't. So what do we do? The doctor's note that says, I don't have to wear it because of my condition, okay? Then what do we do? We say you have to wear a shield, which is fine. And a shield, I mean, the shields I actually have in the car for you, Vista. And they fit with a piece of foam here and elastic and the shield comes down. That's what the medical profession's wearing, the N ninety-five or, or a surgical mask with a shield. Goggles if they're going into a room that, that if somebody's positive, but that's somebody that they know that is positive in a hospital, I say. But you're gonna have both of those. You're gonna have the group that says, I'm medically fragile and I can't wear it because it smethers me, dah dah dah. Or you're gonna have that group that says, I'm medically fragile and I won't work if you don't mandate it. Or my doctor says, because you don't mandate it, I won't work. I don't have to work. That's the scenarios we're gonna be in. And then we have to say, okay, well, I mean, you hate to say it, then do you maybe need to take a year off? I, I don't, you can't say that. I don't think, you can't, you know, that, that has to be a personal choice. That has to be that adult's personal choice. And like Nikki said, what do we do with these people that have to have two people work? They have to have both incomes. So they have to work and that includes our teachers. That includes people that are taking care of our children, but that includes our teachers too. There are two household incomes. So if we have, like she said, Amy, I'm sorry, I'm pointing to people that are listening, can't, don't know who I'm pointing at. I apologize. Amy says, we have had teachers that will say, I'll get a doctor's note and it's gonna be to wear or not to wear. And it's, as bad as you hate to say it, it's like Vista said. You know, we're gonna have a doctor's note. You've got, you've got people, you've got medical professionals that will write it for anything you tell them you want it to write. I can't take Jim because it makes me sweat. I'm out of shape while I fly with it. But you see it. And so what do we do? How do we do that? I mean.
I think we take the high road considering this is public space. If, if the community, if the mask weren't, weren't that important part of what we're trying to do to slow this down, we wouldn't be hearing all this talk about it. When our medical experts say it's the right thing to do, I can't fix all these other little outline problems. There's gonna be people that don't wanna wear the mask. We realize that. But given a strong message that we require in our building, we can deal with those who can't handle masks as they come up and try to handle that the best we can. But we cannot make a rule for every circumstance that's gonna pop up because of these masks. We can make a rule that say a mask is required in our building. And every time we have to deal with that on a personal issue with some person, eventually it may, may come down to where we have to deal with them one-on-one and say, well, this may not be the best place for you to be right now. You might need to be homeschool.
And they say their top three things to get rid of this? Wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands. So why are we saying, don't wear a mask?
I don't, I don't, I know that there are gonna be a lot of people that don't want us to do this. But there're gonna be a lot of people in the long run say, it benefited our whole community. Not just us in this building, but all the people that these children touch. All the kids that run up here and go to the store after they get out of school. All the places these kids, children go. All the place I go. Any place I go, I mean, any more, maybe. I think it's, it's a better choice to say masks are required and then deal with what we have to once we get there. I hate it that the administration is gonna have an extra burden on them, but this is all we got. We don't have any magic formula. It's wash your hands, social distance, and wear a mask. That's all we got. And if we don't use that one tool, we're leaving, we're leaving a lot of people out here to be exposed. Not just the people in this school, but all the people in this school that go out and touch everybody in our community. So I, I just feel like you can't fix everything about this, the problem with the mask. But we can certainly say, we require you to have a mask in our building and that, that should be, that should be it. I realize the young kids are gonna have a hard time doing that. We're not gonna expect everybody to come up to speed on day one. It's gonna take a while for people to get used to. It's gonna take us a time as a community. But I'm seeing a trend in our community. Places I go now, I see more masks. Six weeks ago, if you wore a mask in somewhere, you looked like a, an outlier, you know? You were the, you were the one out of ten. Now it's getting more. It's like five out of ten. So I think the message is out there. I don't think people will fight as much as you think considering, I don't feel like I'm taking away anybody's personal rights here. I'm only asking them to sacrifice a little bit so that we all benefit along. I, I don't think we need a whole lot of, you know, we, we could do every kind of option and variable you can think of. Scenario that could come out of this situation. But if we don't require masks in this building, they will use that against us. Because we didn't say you have to have it on. And I know there'll be notes, there'll be doctors, there'll be all kinds of circumstances come up that we can't control. But we can control the requirement.
Something I'd like to bring up. Hammond County and Granger County have come up with ideas. They're gonna start school labor, labor day. Because of this problem right now, it's so, you know, widespread. And to kind of hopefully it'll slow down labor day.
What did Granger County say? When did Granger County? I didn't know that they had, they were suspending.
More and the last night more late.
Okay. I, I hadn't.
And I'm not, you know, I'm just wondering what it hurt you.
Well, I, I hadn't heard of your county, did you?
So Bear County's gonna go, they picked up a couple of days to talk to the wife about that.
The only one I had, I'm sorry, is Hammond County on September eighth, which is the T D F Labor Day. The last word I had with Granger County, and that's just simply the cause. Takes another her significant other, uh, teaches in Granger County. And it doesn't say that they're, they're, they're suspending it. And again, Nikki, this was Friday, Friday night. It was Friday night, but now the thing they're doing is they're alternating, uh, they're staggering, uh, Monday, Tuesday for one group, Thursday, Friday for another group, and nobody, everybody's virtual on Wednesday. And that, that's the last I got. And, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, the last, the only thing I knew was that.
There was one last night. Is it Clayburn County or stuff?
Well, Clayburn County's terrible, her, okay. And, and again, I, okay, I just probably does what your thoughts. I mean, and again, that's, that's, that could be whatever we decide.
Bear County go with it.
My brother.
Severe County went to four thirty, but they're putting out their date to the day we start.
Went a little later, crossed the issue up a little. Maybe that would be such an issue. I don't know. It's a thought.
Well, we're not scheduled to start from the eleventh.
Well, let me ask this. Have they already started? Is this something that's ongoing, that that task force on Wednesday lets everybody know how this?
Jan belongs to. And I said, I was told by, I was told by Casey and Manny when they came over to meet with Michael and myself on Friday, that there's nobody that's designated really to call what phase we're in except the school system. They've decided now. The school system will decide what phase we're in. I thought it was gonna be the health department.
Look, I thought it was gonna be, when it was first discussed, I thought it was gonna be the health department along with the directors. And I'm on my phone only to show you one thing of what the health department has put out. And it's because of what I do at work. On the health department, Tennessee Health, and I know you can't see this out there in the real world, but you can, if you look up T, DOH, and you hit the yellow bar and it will give you the ongoing issue of the coronavirus. And it gives you the updates every day. Well, okay. I'm gonna give that. Then you can click down here and it will say, including county level information. When you click that county level information, it gives you a readout. And it also will even give you the Epi curve, which is epidemiology curve. And with that, you pick a region. And when you pick a region, you have to pick East Tennessee or whatever, and it follows in and will tell you where that Epi curve is. Now, a lot of people are saying you don't necessarily follow with the Epi curve. Do you listen to the Epi curve? And, and that's even the state saying, because that's the cases per.
One hundred thousand.
Cases per hundred thousand of each county. You can pull up every county in the state of Tennessee. I'm not even out. But I know you're not concerned with Cock County. So it will tell you per, per percentage of where we were. And I wanna say yesterday, was it yesterday? We were at nineteen, which was above the threshold.
We're at twenty-eight point three four.
Uh, it might have been nineteen and twenty-one before we were. Of course, you've gotta realize the state of Tennessee does not report until two o'clock Central Time every day. So what you're looking at is not today. You're looking at yesterday. So I was under the understanding from Casey in the task force meeting, because I was there for the health side, Casey's there for the school side, that, um, that it was gonna be the health department, the mayors, and the school directors. Well, then last week, I don't think that the directors that they're wanting to do that, or the, the county mayors. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Justin. It's, it's the same thing. But again, you're not looking at real-time data. You're looking at the last five days.
Is that the percentage of what? Of it, if you equate it with our population.
Right. The, the red lines, are we above?
Yeah.
And we are above.
Are July twenty-sixth, sixty-sixth, fourteen, twenty-nine.
It just says that we're above the threshold of cases reported.
Threshold of what?
Of case, of positive cases reported or probable cases reported. You realize if, if you're, okay, go back to when you had all three of your kids home. You test positive, your wife and three children follow positive, probable positive. And that, that number is counted in because they live in your household. Whether or not they can have positive or not, they're considered probable positive. That's what we were told. Again, I, I'm just telling you what we've been told with the probable positive because you're in the same airspace. You may not have tested positive the other four, but that probable positive falls in that area. Again, you'll have that issue debated from whoever you talk to, at the health department. But last week, the best that we could get was that the schools, it would literally be at like the directors. The health department doesn't want anything to do with it.
This is what I understood after we.
It's the directors.
Like, they have several schools. So if one of their schools retired in cases, they might shut that school down. But the rest of the Cock County schools continue to function. Whereas with ours, it would be, we're just a one school. So it'd be, you know, be, but like, if you have a lot of schools, you could just choose a one school to tie in cases.
Right. Say for instance, if Centerview, if Centerview had a high number of cases in their school, the county could say, we're gonna shut down Centerview. We're gonna shut down the school and do a deep plan. So none of the kids that, and, and that's what my question was, was okay. So you're saying no children will attend Centerview school for a couple of days? What if their parent happens to live in Del Rio, but they just work at Centerview? And that child's not been around those other children except from the school, you know? Or what about the high school students that go to Centerview to catch a bus, to come to the high school? So I don't know how you could do that logistic-wise. Of course, that's not our problem to try to figure out. But I'm just saying, how would you, how would you logistically figure that one out?
I'm just glad we don't have buses.
I don't know how you could logistically fill that out unless you just said, everybody in that, that zip code or that area from, from this road to this road or this line. But I don't know how you would state it on how you'd figure that out. But.
You were fixing to ask us if we, what we thought about the later start. My question is, how are you gonna determine what phase we're in? Because that will determine.
Where do we start it off?
Exactly.
I think that we'll just have to, you mean like what number we'll have? I think they would say, like, if you have one in a classroom, that would not warrant closing the whole school down. You might tell that class to stay home for so many, two or three to five days till you thoroughly clean the room. Then they said that if they see, and I don't believe, I've read of a specific number. If you see that there's quite a few cases throughout the school, then that's when you would start moving it down. To, uh, like one case, I would think would put you maybe like in phase three. But if you have, uh, several more cases, you might go down to phase two. But if it really was a large number, not a large number, I would say. And I think that's something we're gonna have to come up with, like.
See, that's what we need to do.
Well, but they didn't have any, like when I asked the county the other day, they don't have any. You know what I mean?
Right.
It's something that I think we all thought we were gonna get guidance from the health department during the calling. So now that we've not, we're not gonna get that, and I'm not putting the health department down because they're probably bombarding the kids. But I think we're gonna have to sit down as an administrative team and a board to get an outline. If we have one, if it's isolated to a classroom, we have one.
We're here now. Let's do it. Well, my thing is, I think we should require guidance from the Department of Education, Department of Health. I don't think that we ought to just sit back and say, because one person at the Cock County Health Department said.
Well, still, we're fixing to start.
I realize that.
So we need to.
We've got eleven days, the county don't. The county's gonna be starting a lot sooner, they're gonna start waiting high for us. So, you know, how are they gonna figure it out? Have they talked to somebody with the health department and changed it?
That's the county, this is us.
Well, I realize that, Linda, but that's my point. I'm saying, I don't think that we have, without getting some guidance from, we don't know who's positive, they don't have to tell us. The, the health department, they have to tell. It is required that you are registered with the health department, and the health department is, will call you. And say, are you staying in quarantine? Has anybody, are you having symptoms? What are in your symptoms? So the health department's job is just like if this were Legionnaires' disease, they are required to call that person. HIPAA does not allow us to do that.
Required to call the school?
So, not necessarily, I don't think they have to call.
How are we gonna know?
That's my point, that's my point. We've got to push back and say, we've got to have some guidance. We've got to have some guidance from the health department, whether it be locally or statewide. That we've got to have some kind of guidance to know some type of number that we are to dictate what we do, or to, not dictate, but to, to help us manage what do we do? You know, if we're gonna have four hundred kids on campus, if one has it, I mean, if four have it, okay, what's that percentage? Does that, does that put us out? Does that put us dropping a phase? We, we've come up with a plan, we've submitted it to the state, we've got a plan, but we've got to have some guidance on the health side that specifies the cases, and that specifies what we've got to do, and again, I think we've got to request that from the health department.
With the main lady from, uh, the main lady, I called the health woman the other day. But when we met with her, uh, she did not specify a certain number, did she, Amy, and Justin?
What she did say to us, see, we had it in our plan describing the Epi curve, and that we would follow the model of ten out of one hundred thousand with new you down to phase one, because there's different phases you use. We found that in the other plans, but we modeled that for ours, and she told us to take it out and said that the health department would give us guidance, that we weren't to decide it ourselves.
Thank you, that's my point. The health department has to say that now.
Right.
That, that county, it's not just the directors. The health department has to give us guidance. They may not want to, they may not want something else added to them, that's why I'm saying. We may have to go a step above that local health department and say, well, hello, Tennessee Department of Health, we're not getting what we need from our local health department, we need you to help us.
As Dustin said, our plan goes for the community spread, not necessarily just our school grid.
Yes.
So if you would like, I can poll the directors again to see if they have charts. They, uh, that Epi curve or whatever you were talking about, is that the name of?
Yeah, it's epidemiology.
It's what they're talking about, watching and going by, that, do you mind, and I can email it to you all.
Do we need the other directors, or do we need the health department?
We need the information.
I'll contact the health department.
Health department to say it, what we're gonna do, and I mean, the good thing is.
And I'll contact the state.
We've got.
I'm sorry I don't have these answers, but I think we'll find out, we still have these answers.
We're learning.
They're kinda, I do know if you just have one in one class, I can't keep this up on my nose, I apologize. One in one, like you had a child in one classroom, then you would reassess, like, if there were anybody in the proximity with more than ten minutes of that child, you know, or you would close the classroom down, those kids would stay home for three to five days till you thoroughly cleaned the classroom. And then they could come back, not the one with them, but you know, the others would come back. And, you know, just be monitored, I guess, and assess. Uh, I'll be honest with you, I think everybody would like definite answers, be able to shoot you the black and white answers. But I think this is such an unknown territory that people are just trying to get done as fast as they can, what's being required.
If that's the route, wouldn't that go back to the infrastructure? If it wasn't the teacher that, uh, had the virus? If they sent that one child home and then the whole class, they home three to five days, and not the two weeks?
Yes.
Then they would come back?
That's, uh, you would think, but you know, as I've said, they have the other, the law, the coronavirus law, which I put in your thing, the act. It's called the Family Coronavirus, you know, here's a, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and Boy, Tag, League Rights, you know? Like, and they could go get a physician to say that they need to be quarantined for fourteen days to see if they can, if they could stay home fourteen, that, you know?
So the kids could come back, but the teacher couldn't?
Well, according to what this is saying, Families First Coronavirus Response Act, you know? It's kind of different for the, uh, students, and you know, that is what it's pertaining to, I would think, to the teachers and the employees. Waging our division, so this is covered employees, eligible employees, this is employees, not kids. We followed the national plan, Severville Plan, Greenville Plan, Dr. St., you know, we took all of them and studied them, came up with our plan. And they all have primarily the same things. I wish I could give you specific instructions, but I'll be honest with you, none of them had them, did they, Dustin? They're all learning, and I, you know, I will call and see the health department if they have, you want numbers, you want specific numbers, like.
I want to know what the phases are, yes.
Well, our, okay, what numbers we want going to phase one, going to phase two, three, four.
Right.
Four is nobody, but anyone.
School population.
I will find that, I'll do the best of my ability, as I say, I do not think schools, I think school systems are learning as they go, they're going, you know? Don't you, Dustin? We're observing.
I don't think we're, they're not gonna tell us, I don't think.
Nobody wants to commit to it.
So I don't think we can, I don't think we can have the option of using school data, because I don't think there's gonna be such a thing as school data. But I'm gonna say, seven kids in Newport Grammar's School.
And right now, the ones that are using it is the community and theirs. Uh, that threshold of ten is the shutting down phase one, and that would put us at nearly three times that threshold, if we were using specifically that, because we're right now at twenty-nine point something, according to that threshold.
Well, we wouldn't use the community population, you have to use the school population.
Right, but I'm saying the ones that are using community, that's where we would be right now.
Okay, if they won't tell us how many are in our school that have it, how did they get the information, like, October started, you know, last week, they already have a case.
I mean, I'm just saying that happens. I don't know, I don't see, Jane might know more about, because that's, that's a HIPAA thing, but I don't know how.
HIPAA and a perfa issue.
Yeah, you're looking at double.
A double-edged sword with the perfa and the kids and HIPAA. Um, and I'll honestly see the kid that was school three days and tested positive, he had it before school probably ever started. I mean, because he's got a fourteen-day infection. And some people are showing signs in seven days, and some people are showing signs on day thirteen. Some people are not showing signs on day fifteen or sixteen, even though it says what they, they. So.
I think a lot are going back.
To bring up what Nikki said, that general, and sort of bring it back together. That is an option. Today's the twenty-seventh, we don't start school until eleven. In the event that, which gives us two weeks, we're blessed, we've got two weeks to still gather, look at what happens. Um. I think we'd probably try to, uh, use those two weeks to see what, or at least next week, see what we're gonna do. One, the county's back in session, we'll see what they do, of how it happened, does a big huge spike go up? In the event it does, then that gives us the five days to figure out. Um, word of unknown. I mean, right now, everybody this week making it off and saying they're gonna go, they're gonna wait for the day after day to day. They're gonna go the first night. Has somebody actually said they're gonna go the whole first nine weeks virtual? Or is that just somebody saying they'd like to do that?
Not that I know of on the county.
Well, you just mentioned it, that's why I said it, you said for the first nine weeks, and I thought, is there somebody?
No, that was just something I put out there to people.
Right.
I believe that we're not looking to turn our schools into virtual learning campuses, at least people in my camp, the way I'm thinking. I'm just looking for advice, a little time to figure out, are we at the top of this surge? Are we gonna start falling off, hopefully, and the masks start making the difference? Are we still climbing?
Right, well, that's what, I mean, I just thought maybe you had heard of the system that we're doing for two weeks.
No, I didn't.
That was just your.
That was my suggestion based on, I'm prepared to know that we're not looking to, uh, turn this into a forever thing. I know, uh, I think there's gonna be a lot of benefits coming from virtual learning, and, and once we get back in the classroom, we can now use that same virtual learning tool in the classroom to help us be a better teacher, so. To me, the nine weeks buffer was a chance to really put everybody in a virtual learning boot camp, per se, and force everyone to adapt as much as they can, as fast as we can. And then we're gonna have to pick up the ones that, that weren't able to do that, and, you know, catch them up to speed, but.
And we've already hired two of those for the Public Care Act, two intervention to do that. We've already hired two other teachers, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I missed out on something important.
But we do have time, I think, like we said, to look at that as an option, at least for this system.
But if we don't know what we're looking at, that's hard to feel, like, we need to know exactly the numbers to make that decision.
Oh, I agree, Linda, I mean, we've got to have some type of information from some medical area to help us, whether it's our local flipping hospital that gives us information.
Should we ask for, uh, McConaughey, might be to come in here, be our next lady?
Well, um, he's the one that said it was up to the directors, it wasn't up to the health department, so we may even have.
And he's the one that said they didn't have the staff to follow it through. Did he say that on one of our things?
Uh, he, he, we may have to go a step above, we may have to go to the regional director to get what we need.
I'm sure he worked with the P S.
He could communicate maybe with.
He's the one that.
Regional director.
We're data people, but we're data people when it comes to test scores and attendance, and data is our data, this isn't our data.
We need to know, what do they recommend? Do they recommend that they, and it was my understanding now that it's recommended that you go by your school. What cases are in your school?
But we don't know it.
Well, I know, but if they don't legally have to report them, because there's a privacy, and if, and they have to get in touch with the people that are getting in close proximity. But I don't know, they could tell us the numbers if they know, but not everybody may have gone and reported, but we could have him to come to talk, and obviously, Tim, did you, is that what you were thinking?
Well, if he's, uh, it certainly would be good to have somebody with skills in here giving us some good advice on how to make some of these tough decisions.
But you still want me to contact the state department, the health, and the health department, and the other directors on how they're going about determining what phase they're in? You know, how they're looking at what phase, if they're in phase two, what does that look like? What's the percentage of kids that have been diagnosed with their teachers? Is that what you're asking?
I'll do it. Okay, so Nikki did bring up, I mean, guys, we're still in the workshop part, but, uh, Nikki did bring up that, that should be something we consider, and we'll take that as a consideration to look at, and I think we've still got nine days to look. We've at least got five days, but if not nine. I, I mean, to the end of this week, we've got to see what, one.
Her views.
Yes, I understand, well, I mean, that's, that's what we're gonna try to figure out, and this all will merely suggest that, but, um, okay.
If we do figure out what, so you do it, if we're, if we do that, we, yeah, okay, and whenever we do it, for the next.
That was his, that was his request, that we find out on Thursday, so decisions could be made by Thursday and alert everybody on Friday that next week we're gonna be in such and such phase, that's what he had requested, but I don't know that's what he can hear.
So will that be posted on our website?
Oh, yes, it's automatically posted.
No, it is not now, right?
We don't, we really got started yet, so it changes every week to where, you know.
Right, but what I'm saying is, right, if we start, hopefully, we will have, have, be in a phase.
Yeah, like, next week, we have to know, next Wednesday, we have to know, so we can announce it, because we start the week after.
So we're starting next week?
Starting next week, we can announce the phase of the upcoming week, once we decide how we're gonna turn.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, uh, one more thing I did want to throw out is, uh, we've, we've talked about classroom, classroom breath. We've talked about what we're gonna do in the cafeterias. We're gonna use those cafeterias, we've talked about, we're extending, thank you for the ones that worked on it scheduled, those are not. Um.
Okay.
I know that it has been recommended that P E go outside as much as possible. One, that gives the kids a break from the masks or whatever, uh, they can social distance, they still get that P E. Um. What do we do with the rest of the specialties? Do we still have fans? I think the counties wanted to pick that. Do we still go to guidance? We've got guidance, STEM lab, computer lab, art, music, library, P E. P E, we know they can go outside, and they can do a lot, the gym is gonna allow the social distance. This is just me, this is just my thoughts. Laboratory, our laboratory is big enough for one classroom to put people socially distanced, I feel. But STEM lab and computer lab can't just pick that up and go somewhere. So we may have to look at scheduling half of the people to go of some sort. We may have to look, and again, that's not us, that'd be an administrative thing, that's not us, but I just wanted, we need to have those thought processes going. Administration needs to, like, think about this, this is from my bed.
Do those rooms are not as big as a classroom?
They are. But you can't move, in a classroom, I can move this a little bit more, but in computers, I don't know how far you can physically move that computer. That's just something that administration.
Yeah, they're all using the laptops.
Yeah.
Right, with their laptops, I think we're gonna be fine.
But we've also discussed the idea of, since we would have kids stay in, like, a cohort of how they rotate, that maybe rather than going back to being in group homework, this is something we threw out and discussed, rather than then splitting back, going back to your homeroom and then going to a special. Like, if your special, uh, say you're in my classroom, and specials come right after my first period, then it's always first period every day, so my special group, instead of it being my homeroom, it'd be my first period games, and then the other teacher's first period, and so on, and that way they're together, and we've talked about using the Chromebooks in the lab.
And that would be their individual Chromebook.
Yeah, and that way, we're not having to worry about Jen having her e-bookers in between, and stuff like that.
That, okay, that gets to my next point.
Yeah.
If, if I've got somebody coming in, and, and unless I'm wrong on how scheduling is, but if I've got somebody in his music room, if I've got Linda's class in his music room, when your group is ready to come out, Mike's class is in the hallway, is not, how's she gonna like that room, though? She can't, unless she leaves that class out in the hallway, and then she wipes down everything, and then that class comes in. Surely, my suggestion, I think they ought to go to the classroom. The classrooms are gonna have their supplies, the classrooms are gonna be social-distanced in a term, in a word, what do you think?
Amen.
So, music, instead of, and, and I mean, I know she can't take the piano with her, I, I, I apologize for that. She can't take the guitars with her. But she can still take music or something with her and put it up on her laptop and flash it up on the whiteboard, and they could learn and do music. Um. Art, art.
It would be like if she was doing it virtually, because she couldn't take the guitar.
In my mind, and I know this is awful place for me, but I see Little Miss Mauro when he's bored with her little grocery cart. I see the little music, I see poor Little Miss Hope, or Rachel, or, uh, sorry, Paige. I said Rachel Hope, because I looked up at the bar, I see Paige with her little grocery cart, baby, from Food City, pushing everything she needs into the classroom, but then, you know, she's in that classroom, and the kids are still in there, they're socially distanced. I see, you know, Little Miss Mauro, or God Brooke, going with her little art. I see, you know, Little Miss Morrow, or God Brooke, going with her little art supplies all in a buggy or a cart, rolling cart. Guidance, the same way, guidance could go to those classrooms. Guidance could go and teach what they have to teach with the, so I'm thinking art, music, guidance could do in the classroom.
A lot of school districts are doing.
Yeah, a lot of them are doing that, I feel. So then, we've got computer are gonna be on their own, so it's gonna be playing, which is just gonna be their job. She could still go to the classroom. STEM lab, Phil is gonna have to get creative. Um, maybe we could use our outdoor classroom a lot more than we're using it now. Uh, maybe he could use the auditorium for some stuff.
I did, yeah, I was wondering if we could get those plastic uh shields back here, like.
That bars got for later?
Maybe divide the tables off.
That would be a good idea for the, for the STEM lab.
I, I don't know, I can.
They were dating there, so the teachers are with them, because we were into a special classes after our teacher's playing, so if you hold them over. But STEM lab is not.
STEM lab, but that's correct.
Library and guidance.
All that.
There is the negative to the teacher, if, if they're gonna use the teacher's room, the teacher loses their all room to play during that time of the day. And the teacher has to turn their computer over to the special class teacher, that's how they're gonna use the screen.
Okay, the teachers all have a laptop and the teachers have a teacher working.
Well, what I'm saying is, the laptop does not connect to the.
No, they can work out.
Right.
Okay.
But you're talking about people sharing devices.
We're, uh, my point is, we're moving one person, the teacher, versus the whole classroom and contaminating, recontaminating, and recontaminating one room. There is no way you can wipe down, one person can wipe down every surface when that other ten kids are standing out in the hallway. So I mean, I just think that that would be a great start. Will it work long term? I don't know, but I just think it would be a great start, what do you all think? And again, that's the administration to do, not us, but I just was thinking, if we're trying to keep movement around and uh, you know, slow down and social distancing slowed down, then that would be a great start with that.
I think I could do, in the greatest of departmental lives, could go without a teacher swapping classes with, you know, I'm more of a happy science. I'm gonna go to the classroom, teacher's physics, and then uh, teacher swap instead of kids.
Well, I thought of that too, but then you don't have any of your teaching aids.
I did, I did.
But you don't, well, you have a card, but like, if I'm teaching world history, I ain't got no map, I can't take the big map or. I have thought of that too, but it would keep them from being out in the hallways and, and to doing that. That may be a very good option to think about as well, is teachers to go classroom to classroom, cause then, then you're still not having all of the congregating.
That's what Jane and I did.
Right.
We were just right.
Right, again, I understand that, and a- again, that, I don't think that's our choice, that's administration, but I think that's things that they ought to think of. Of, that would stop a lot of the movement around. I love it, David looks at me and he blinks his eyes and his glasses fall. He's like me, his glasses fall, and he looks at me, shakes his head, keeps smiling, keeps grimacing, keeps.
He's seeing my eyes, I'm smiling.
Yeah, yeah, but, okay, so I just think that.
And there, there are a lot of guidelines that show up and that talk about that, that we should not cross contaminate our students, that we should do what we do to conserve the pain in their group, cause if it does break out.
And you got that one break down?
Only that one group that you stayed with all day long, so now you can start tracking better and get people separated, great idea.
Again, that's the.
Have to leave at eleven thirty.
I, I know, I'm sorry, that's the world according to God.
You all, if you wanna go along, you're welcome to stay.
No, uh, we're all, me and Michael are work schedules, sorry, this is my line, uh, uh. That's just something that I, that I would think that would.
I think several districts are trying things like that, keep children more in a controlled group.
That's right. So at least I'm not the only one that's had these two eighty dollars, good thing. Okay, um, anybody else before, cause guys, it's gonna be up to somebody, I, I guess now we sit down and we probably write the verbiage of what are we gonna do about the two things we have on the agenda. So the wearing of masks and considering established critical infrastructure workers. Um. Masks. Uh.
We do a roll call over on them.
That's fine with me, doesn't matter with me. Um, we just need to say, we need to get the verbiage down of what somebody is gonna, and again, it may not pass the first time, it may not pass the second time, it may not pass the third time, who knows? Uh, and I guess it's eventually got to do something. But we need verbiage on what we're gonna do. And um, and what we're gonna, how we're gonna state it. Again, I guess to recap, um. David had said he would prefer the verbiage to require, but not K three two, is that what you said?
Think we should uh.
I mean, I mean, we're not in the meeting yet, I guess, that's what I'm saying, I'm just trying to think of what, you know, how we're gonna come up with what we're gonna do. And then, on the critical, critical infrastructure, I guess, to throw it back to, to try to paraphrase it. I think it's a positive tool to help with the education work. Um, if, if nobody knows, cause we're all walking around, we don't know, but if you're sick, you're not gonna be placed in a room with students. If you're sick, if you're symptomatic, you're not gonna wanna be in a room with students. It may be an observation room, it may be something, but, you know, even if you're doing virtual, if we did virtual for nine weeks, teachers are gonna be here. Kids wouldn't be, but the teachers are gonna be in the freaking order. Um, so, um, I, I think that, that with that infrastructure, saying positive for the infrastructure or yes for the infrastructure, that teachers are essential to teach our children. We're not gonna ask them to come in if they're symptomatic or be, or if they're sick to be in the classroom. Um. I don't know, you know, if they have been exposed, but not, I mean, I, I guess it's kinda like the flu, if you're, a lot of people are exposed, but they never get positive, but you don't know. But I think that'd be a good point, if we're gonna require the masks. Um, are we gonna require that the, the, the teachers wear them, or they're gonna have the option to wear the shield? To be able to teach phonics and that kinda stuff? Uh, are we gonna allow the teacher, if they are social distanced, to wear the shield, not the mask, so that their mouth could be seen?
I don't have an or for them.
Well, the mask.
Or.
Or a shield.
Quite.
Because how am I gonna teach phonics and show a child in the lower grades how to, to do their mouth? How's our speech person, how am I gonna do that if you can't see my mouth?
I understand, that's not phonics for me.
Uh, I mean, I mean, okay, so how am I gonna say, no, you have to put your tongue in the roof of your mouth to do the, you know? If they can't see me.
Would it be an or?
I would think that it would be an, I, I, I think we could put it an or. Teachers are gonna be, you know, it would be required that they wore the mask.
About staff.
Staff, not says teachers, I'm sorry, staff, it's gonna be either or. Um. I would suggest that if you're within that six feet. One on one, that you wear a mask. I guess I would suggest that if I'm gonna be this close, if you're, if, if we're gonna say we're gonna require them. And again, I'm throwing it out there, I would still think that it would be to strongly encourage. That, that's my stand, but I'm not gonna be the one that's making the, the proclamation, or I'm not the one that's gonna be probably making the motion.
Are you saying all times or just?
Mine would be that we strongly encourage that masks be worn.
Based on CDC guidelines.
Um.
Which also covers six feet and anytime, you know, cause CDC guidelines, they have.
You can't social distance.
When you can't social distance.
So when they're up front of the room teaching.
If they're up in front of the room teaching, and they're social distanced, I feel like they should have the option to wear the shield. And we're gonna have the shields, we're providing, I've got dinner label in my collar right now for you, Dustin, in the back of my collar, sorry.
Well, you can see Barb's back there behind the, a barrier, you know, and there'll be some situations where we can do that.
She were teaching Dustin and Justin, she would be the, the, the required distance from them. And that would be, I think that would be appropriate.
I agree.
Okay.
There's something all times, I just wanna make sure I know when teachers ask.
Well, no, she would have, have one.
Oh, that, that's something, I guess, some sort of barrier, yes. Rob, a barrier or face shield or a mask. Because teachers are gonna ask, and I wanna make sure that I'm giving her what you want, or we are giving them what you all ask, or what you all might have.
Okay. I mean, there's gonna be stipulations of what it is, we can't, it was like, I laughed until Mike, it cannot be like on a karate kid, the hula hoop with the shower curtain, and you just open it up and you talk, and then you close it, you can't do that.
With the clear shower curtain, you can do.
Well, you did a clear shirt, no worries. A, a lot of people are using shower curtains and uh PVC pipe uh to, to do different stuff, I, I, I love that. I saw that as I came in, I do like that. So, um, I mean, is that something we wanna say, do we wanna, I mean.
How about the, a barrier, face shield, or mask is to be worn by staff in accordance with the CDC guidelines. Masks are to be worn when within six foot distance or so on.
When social distancing cannot be. Um, I don't know what to say. I still.
Not real.
I'm like Mike, I think it'll be a, it'll be a choice, I mean, I'm just saying, because I was like, David said it, you know, if my daddy said.
You don't make saying.
I'm coming to school, I told you real quick, my daddy's a nurse, a stupid, I never wore one, and I've been the kid that said, David, you probably would have been too.
Do you want, do you want us to say, it's required or encouraged or what?
Required.
Required.
Based on CDC guidelines. We're really looking for that, that, that's their job, that they're saying is the thing we need to do to help slow this down. I see no rock, no problem requiring that in our school building. In a place where we know there's gonna be transmission of the disease, there's no question about it.
And what is the student's name?
It's just where does it go once it gets here, and how fast does it spread.
When you get to take a barrier, face shield, mask is required to be worn by staff in accordance with CDC guidelines. Masks are to be worn when within six feet distance or so on. Is that, is that fit correctly?
Well, I, I, I don't think you say within six feet, you just gotta put the word social distancing is not uh attainable.
Okay.
Because. You know, you're gonna have people who can hardly scream, you're not six feet from me, you're not six feet from me. Um. I mean, I think that, that's from our teachers. I, I think that's, again, I, I think we do that by lead by example. Um. I, I mean, that's, that's my gut, I'm saying we lead by example, and if they choose to wear the face shield, then that's much less than the mask. Um.
We're supplying face shields for everybody, masks for everybody.
Some too.
Now, barriers are gonna have, I mean, I, I don't think somebody should put a barrier up that blocks the kid, you know, I think a barrier like that that's movable.
Yes, we can't put up a, we can't put up a barrier, build a barrier between a teacher and the, and the classroom, you've gotta be able to move some things in that classroom. I mean, we can't, we can't hang a shower curtain from one end of that built room to the other room and, and just stay behind it, that, that's my tension. Um, okay, so when we go to the meeting, I mean, it'll have to be whoever wants to, to make the motion. Um, and how you wanna state it, I, I mean, that's freedom of speech, that's freedom of what you want. Um, may not be agreed upon by everybody, and that's what I'm saying, we'll do what, you know, cause I mean, I'm sitting here saying I won't, I won't vote for a requirement or a mandate. Um, I, I just can't do that in my heart of hearts, and some can, and some can't, and that would be your choice. Um, and then we need to bring up some kind of verbiage about the infrastructure. And then, I mean, I know in the workshop we discussed a lot, I think we seen you trying to take all those notes. Um, I think we do have some time as a board and helping with uh, and with the director on what we do about timeframe. We're all in agreement, and we've got some time, not a lot of time, but we've got some time about the agreement of the, the timeframe. And then, a school, uh, and then we brought that to the attention of the, and it's again, the administration's piled on that about the, of how we might do specials. But, um, I feel like she values our input, just like we value her input. And I think we've all given you our input on that. Um, I hope we're not bombarded. So, um. I don't know, I, I guess, has anybody else got anything else they wanna say before we go into the meeting?
Student asked, you, you said staff.
It'll be whoever makes the.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, cause I'm trying to keep.
I, I know, it'll be whoever makes the, the motion, doesn't it? I can't sit here.
That's why I just been talking about staff.
I mean, I mean, that may be for you.
Oh, no.
I, I don't mean that, I don't mean that root or sniffy, I'm just saying whoever makes the motion, then, you know, somebody will have to second if they agree with it, and then it'll be brought to a vote. And, um, if you don't agree, you don't agree, if you agree, you agree, it's, I mean, that's, that's why we've all got our options and our opinions. And when we leave here, you know, that, that's where it was at, we, you know, it's like we said, it's your household, your household, you do, you know, I don't. I don't hold bridges, I don't, you know, you know, I don't always have to have my way. I wasn't an only child, that's what I tell Sydney all the time, I'm like, you're not a child, I know you're never gonna get your way, but.
We can agree to disagree.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the only thing we can do as adults, is to agree to disagree yourself. All right, is everybody ready for, is it all hearts and minds clear? Let's go into the meeting then real quick. Call the meeting to order, uh, behind Miki here. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand. One nation under God, universal liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, uh, the consent agenda, um, we do have a one item, and that is to approve the minutes.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes.
I was trying to think.
I'm sorry.
All right, I have a motion by Miki, I have a second by Linda to approve the minutes from the June fifteenth meeting, all in favor? I, any votes like sign? Okay, then we will go into, uh, the business agenda, and it is to approve the following items. Um, that came from the workshop in regards to masks. Um, we'll go with it first, do I have anyone that would like to bring up a motion? We'll do this without trying to be interrupting it. If there's two motions, then there's two motions, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I make a motion that uh, masks will be required, mask, uh, face shields are a, what was the other?
Barrier.
Barrier be required for all people at Upright Grammar School, staff and students.
I'll say that much.
All right, Miki made the motion that all masks will be required, uh, that all masks will, will be required or face shields for all students. Of course, students are not gonna have the option for masks, so they're gonna be prepared to. They're not gonna, they're not.
If one and a half of them, I could see a child maybe.
I could see a hundred and fifty.
My ass.
If we had.
That would need that, maybe a shield could provide, not feeling that.
Okay, we have masks, so if they wanna wear their own shield, I guess they could.
They'd have to be on a case by case.
Right. Should we add to that, the uh, CDC guy, based on the CDC guidelines? I may have missed the meeting with Dr. Shit, I'm saying that without.
According to the CDC guidelines.
All right, I'll say.
Or you can see.
I'm trying to get this back. All right, Miki has brought a motion to the floor that we are going to, as a school, require masks and or face shields for all NGS students or staff based on the CDC guidelines. Is that what you want?
That's correct, and I think that includes the fact that they don't recommend that for second graders.
Didn't say that, we just said. Didn't say that. Just said, for all.
What does the CDC guidelines say? We're using it.
According to American Association of PDEA, the association just...
CDC require, they, their, their statement is, no one that has an underlying condition, no one under the age of two, and no one that cannot mentally or physically remove the masks themselves. And when I say mentally or physically, we know that, you know...
Whatever kind of...
Right. Um, so that is the CDC guidelines.
What coverage that?
Free K. Free K.
Free K, I'm sorry, free K.
All right, so, last time, masks are required. Will be masks and/or face shields for all NGS students and staff based on the CDC guidelines, and that is from free K to eight.
They've got there. Face shields for a barrier. And I think the barrier, you might want to specify the size of the barrier because...
Well, it would be, who did that?
Yeah, something similar to this, not something that would be across...
You balled him. Okay. If a teacher wants that, that has to be purchased through the school. We're not gonna have handmade, rigged barriers. We're gonna have, do y'all not agree? I mean, because otherwise, we're gonna have... We're gonna have shower curtains and plastic film, shrink film, and everything else. We're gonna have hula hoops with shower curtains around them, and we're not, we're not gonna do that. We're not gonna look like. So I think that it ought to be, if, if it has to be, if you say barriers, you say NGS approved barriers, or administrative, or administration approved barriers. All right. Is that, I mean, is everybody okay with that, is what I'm saying? All right. Requirement will be masks, face shields, or barriers that are approved by the NGS administration for all students and staff of NGS based on the, based on the CDC guidelines for free K to free A. All right. Miki made the motion, David made the second, we'll do a roll call vote. Miki asked that we do a roll call vote. So I will just go left to right. Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Miki?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jan, no. Motion passes three to two. And the next item is interim guidance for implementing safety practices for critical infrastructure workers. Um, and we talk about the critical infrastructure or essential workers. I mean, I don't know that it all says that it should have explained to a person with suspected or confirmed, I think it's just pure and simple. Stated of guidance of the essential, of critical infrastructure workforce in regards to COVID nineteen. So I have a motion for...
I make a motion that we don't accept that.
Motion by Linda that we do not accept teachers to be critical infrastructure. Linda? With a second by David. I'm just trying to remind Linda, I was just getting her started. Okay, motion was by Linda to, that we do not accept teachers to be considered critical infrastructure. That was seconded by David. Linda?
That would be a yes.
Linda votes yes, that it is, that it is, does not accept. Mike?
No.
Miki?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jan?
No.
Motion passes three to two. Anything else needs to be brought up?
That's deeper.
I guess that's at the administration to figure out about whether they'll come to work or not.
If we, if we have a problem with subs, I guess we'll just have to maybe, we might have your special teachers and...
Can't get teachers to come in and work.
Because we really only have about, we, we only have about four or five sets that would come anyway, didn't we, Mr. Dr. Norton? So I'm sure that has decreased, so, you know, if we have a lot of teachers that choose not to come, I just want you to know upfront.
I agree.
That we might have to rely back on someone to understand.
That decision just needed. That decision just...
And then you all...
Which can change tomorrow. We can change this meeting tomorrow. But for the time being, till we know more, I'd be like, is there anything to that? I'm sorry.
What about visitors? Why?
I'll be at all.
I'll say it's all.
You said, you said staff and students, so you said visitors, so I wanna make sure.
Well, our policy already requires that we're at base three, two, or well, in one class, but in three or two that we require pass come visitors in.
Yeah, that was part of your old plan, that everybody might be in, and there wasn't any...
Which means we voted for mask when it was already in the plan. We don't even know what place we're in.
No, this is... I'm gonna make signs today.
Anything else stand for the board?
Uh, uh, last comment, I, I feel like we let the administration down by not asking this. They came to the board for guidance. Voted it down, so we are giving them the guidance. That's just, I, I mean...
It's not anything, huh?
You have a motion that might change it? You got anything in between, we can live here to compromise?
I, I was planning for this plan. I, I thought it outlined everything well, but, you know, as a board, we voted it down, so. I don't know how, you know, I bring weird, you know, I don't know how else to present it.
So you're concerned that we don't have teachers show up, correct?
Yes, sir.
And they're gonna use this to their advantage, uh, to not work.
Um, I disagree with that, because the teachers, the teachers will be here if they, if all possibly...
Mostly, I agree, because we've got a few outliers that are choosing not to. And any, and any, I'm not just saying teachers, any, any line of business, they're gonna use it for their thing. I just thought this really, have some good, uh, guidelines still out. But again, I stand on the board, whatever we do, we do together.
I agree, and I agree with Mike to say that I thought that was a, a really good plan to say that, that they are critical. Because, like I said, Sandy, you just can't say, okay, I've got, I've got five teachers or I've got five persons. It might be anything from library to third grade, to seventh grade, to eighth grade, that so choose to not come. And how's she gonna fill those, Sandy, he goes...
If they so choose not to come because they're sick, is that what's best for the kids?
No, it's not saying sick, that the infrastructure has clearly said, David, that they won't come and work sick, they won't be required. They would not be, they would not be placed.
Forty percent of the cases don't have these, actually. We're dealing with a pandemic here, we're not dealing with a husband-wife situation. You don't know about that. I don't know about that.
Unless you don't get tested, you won't.
Which takes a week.
I'm trying to...
And we're gonna, we're gonna have that same, we're gonna tell that teacher to come back in here to school and expose everybody, not even knowing if they're sick. I mean, I hope I didn't let anybody down here, because I'm just trying to do what's best for, uh, our community, not just this school. Community, just my people, uh, we live and die as a board, so.
Well, we're together, I think, and this, we, we all have the community, school, children, the, the whole, whole whole axis involved in this. We're all gonna, we're all gonna be affected by this decision, though.
We, we surely can.
I think we, uh, we did do that. Like, we get teachers a chance to do what's right for their families.
Well, they have choice. I mean, I agree. I mean, I'm just saying, teachers have got a choice. They've got a choice not to come. They've got that choice. We weren't taking that choice away from them. We were just saying...
We were strongly suggesting, come to school, you know, you know, you're exposed.
That's what the statement is in our come to school word. We'll put you in your special room, although you're gonna walk through the same doors that everybody else walks through. You're gonna walk right down the hallway everybody else walks through. There's no quarantine special spot they're gonna come to. They will be in contact with people. Just getting in and out of the parking lot. We're gonna put them in a special parking lot. That's a way to keep teachers at school, a way to keep schools open, but it's not a way to slow down the pandemic.
Get rid of it.
It is not.
It's not getting rid of it. I guess, is it my turn?
Well, I mean, we're not getting rid of it, so.
I made a motion that we reserve during the...
I have a motion for adjournment, second.
Three.
I'm adjourned. We're adjourned. Sandy, is this something that we can sign?
I think so.
It's just last.